Good evening. We are reconvening our work session, business meeting of September 12th. We were in executive session and we came out of executive session and we are now in our regular meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're back. Seems like we were never away. Okay, I'm going to open it up for the public to speak on any of the listed agenda items.
Big public.
Public said no.
Public said no. Okay. So we're going to start with the consent agenda. Mr. O, number one, please.
Yep, resolved to approve the consent agenda items two through thirteen as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second. The consent agenda includes approval of the previous meeting minutes, approval for additional unpaid work hours for various staff members, approval of appointing the 2024-25 audit committee members, which consists of Guy Cohen, Barbara Parmley, Amy Sawther, Tom Sawyer, and Jeanette Yetter. We need to appoint the voting delegate for the NISBA annual business meeting.
It's going to be me.
Barbara Parmley will be that voting delegate. We're appointing the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association advocacy liaison, Barbara Parmley. Approving amended 2024-25 substitute listing. Appointing Karen McCarny at the middle school and Gail Arifashay at the high school as the student activities treasurers for their individual buildings. We're rescinding the appointment of a long-term substitute teacher who found a permanent position in another district. We're rescinding the appointment of a bus driver who wasn't able to start as originally appointed. Approving CSE/CPSA placements, approval of additional fall 2024 coaches, including boys' modified soccer, JV soccer, and a volunteer for the football program. And we're approving the final ESY 2024 staffing schedule, which included some updated staff members. That's it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolutions pass. Okay, we're going to start with our presentations and reports. The first item on the agenda is the student representative report. I'd like to welcome Aiden to the board. He's all by himself tonight. So it's on you, kid.
It's nice to be here. Everyone is back to school and it seems that everyone seems to be finding themselves and getting acclimated to the school very well, especially the freshmen. They seem to be finding their way nice. Today, the JCK Foundation came into the high school and gave presentations about mental health to all the classes. Color Wars is coming up on October 18th and Picture Day for underclassmen is September 30th. Thank you.
What about the JCK? Can you tell us a little bit about that?
They're an organization that comes around to schools and gives presentations to remove the stigma around mental health. And they gave presentations to each class individually about and told their story about their struggles with mental health and how to deal with it and how people aren't alone and you could reach out for help.
So do you think, I mean, just, I know this is just supposition, but like, do you feel that that kind of thing is a positive thing for students? That there are students there that really would take that message and use that as what they needed in order to strengthen their mental health?
Yeah, I feel there's definitely students who take that message and use it as a positive and really they get something beneficial out of it and it's not just, you know, something to waste their time. It gives them hope that they're not alone in their struggles.
Does it ask students to like partner? Like I think about the elementary school, like not being a bystander?
Upstand?
What? What is it?
Bystander.
Be an upstander, not a bystander? Like, is that part of that? Like encouraging them to either to reach out or other kids to reach, if you see a child in your class who's stressed or whatever, to reach out?
It brings up, like, if you notice someone in your friend group or one of your peers is struggling, just to say that you're always there for them and that it's okay to be proactive and say that they're not alone. So you don't have to wait for them to necessarily reach out. You could offer your services to them.
And they're going to do this in the middle school? Yes?
So it's in the high school. However, we do have different opportunities in each school building. One of the things that all of our counselors, our own counselors do in each building is they go into classrooms, letting and address a lot of these issues. And really, just last year, I'll give you an example. I saw our counselors going in and doing a lesson about access and where to access help and what do you do if you know somebody is self-harming and where do you go? Who can you go to? How is it safe? So we do a lot of work around in every building in those areas with mental health. I'm also working with Sarah Savado, who's the commissioner of Putnam County's mental health facility, trying to get her and some of her colleagues to come and offer some workshops for even for parents on mental health, especially mental health around social media and phone usage. And we're also working on increasing our current counseling caseload after-school hours with Cove Care. So she's pretty full constantly, which is great that our children don't have to travel. Our parents can't thank us enough for having that service for their children here. I think it was a great decision. It was, you know, a little awkward or bumpy at first, the first couple of times, but after that, it has been an amazing opportunity for our community.
Now, they came now in September. Like, is there a plan, like periodic updating?
I don't know. Generally, speaking, like from my past three years in the high school, there hasn't been. They just come once at the beginning of the year and that's it.
What do you think? Do you think that would be something that we should think about?
I think something maybe once later in the year wouldn't be a bad idea because if it happens, I think if it happens too often, people might not take it seriously and just it's the same old story over and over again. But just a reminder, near the end of the year, wouldn't hurt.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Dr. Luft.
Good evening, everyone. So we have a quick opening of schools presentation. I do want to recognize some of the events that have been happening. Our elementary school had their kindergarten back-to-school night over the summer, but for the last two evenings had their other grade levels for elementary school back-to-school night. I know middle school is scheduled for next week, as well as a facilities planning committee meeting and other many meetings coming up. I do also want to recognize yesterday, September 11th, and always a very solemn day for everyone. And the fact that I was in Putnam Valley on that day will always resonate with me, working as a teaching assistant my first year in education. So I just didn't want the opportunity to pass without at least recognizing those events and the tragic losses of those days. So on a happier note, we're all back at school. I want to welcome everyone back. This graphic, well, still not finalized, we're getting closer. This is the culmination of over a year's work and the development of our core values that guide our work each and every other day: community, opportunity, resiliency, and empowerment. So you'll notice that they're not necessarily in the right order on this graphic. That's one of the things that we're changing. But this is going to be sort of our go-to graphic in terms of letterhead and putting it all over the walls and like you see some of the IB posters that are up. We really want to make sure that this is front and center for everyone to see and recognize and embrace as we continue our work here in Putnam Valley. So I wanted to provide that quick update. As soon as we have the finalized document, we'll start working with BOCs to print them and laminate them and really be able to get them out to the public. So we had discussed earlier in the summer with the board, as well as our administrative team, our district goal for the upcoming year. And I have draft because it hasn't yet been adopted by the board, but this is really an opportunity to begin this conversation. We decided after having community as our goal last school year, that we would shift to the next of our core values, opportunity. And it's not to say that in any way we're losing any of the work that began last year. In fact, I know that buildings are continuing and increasing opportunities for our community to come into our buildings. I'll get both words in there. So all that community-based work continues and is growing this year, but we want to shift to finding opportunities. So a quick goal, a draft goal that we came up as an administrative team is opportunity, identifying opportunities to engage students, partner with parents, enhance instructional practices, and empower educators. So that's going to be our draft goal and certainly the board has an opportunity to help us refine that if necessary. As you can see, teachers are already getting out in front of this goal. So welcome to 180 days, 180 opportunities. So some of our students showing off their poster in front of their classroom. We did take some time to recognize our new staff members as we do every year. We welcome new staff members to the districts. I won't embarrass them for a second time, but I did want to at least offer this publicly. You'll see them getting ready for their bus tour, hosted by Sam and Dave. And I think Mike's getting more and more involved each year that goes by. Our bus driver is starting to give his two cents. But I do want to recognize these individuals and welcome to the Putnam Valley family. Just a quick update on enrollments. Obviously, you'll see much more detail as our buildings begin their back-to-school presentations, but our high school enrollment has gone to 535, which is an increase of 37 students. Part of that increase is driven by the Garrison students. I believe we ended up with 13 incoming freshmen, two returning sophomores, and two incoming sophomores. So we're looking at 15 new students to Putnam Valley. We were in this space for freshman foundations and it was packed. All of our big buddies were here, as well as our ninth graders. And I was standing right over here and asked Mr. Mello, I said, "Where are the Garrison kids?" And he said, "I have no idea." And I was like, "Good." So they were already interspersed with their big buddies, meeting other students, and that's really what we want their experience to be, right? The answer I didn't want to hear is like, "They're all sitting at that one table and they're in the corner," because that's the last thing that we want. So I was happy to hear that that seems to be going well. And the feedback we received from the students who came last year has been very positive. We're continuing to work closely with Garrison. In fact, we've been provided the opportunity to come present to their Board of Education. So that's something that myself and others will be doing in the near future to really give them an overview of what it's like here in Putnam Valley and to answer any questions they may have. Our middle school saw an increase of 23 students, so they're up to 452 students. And our elementary school, a decline of 31 students, much of that driven by an extraordinarily small incoming kindergarten class, nearly 30 students lower than many of our others. So other than that, we see stability and growth across the district, which is actually maybe the first time in a couple of years, we've seen an increase in the middle school and high school numbers. And as I mentioned before, lots of more information coming from our building principals when they present. So facilities, as everyone who's stepped foot in Putnam Valley knows, we have an extraordinarily talented and dedicated building ground staff. I always tell everyone the story, we had another school district here visiting. They wanted to see the Wellness Center. They were building something very similar. Their facilities director was late. I walked him down to the Wellness Center and on the way back up, he stopped in the middle hallway and grabbed me and said, "I want you to know that you have the cleanest buildings I have ever seen in my entire life." Now, this is someone whose job it is to supervise people who clean buildings. So I know that we recognize that all of the time, what a tremendous job our staff does, but it was great to hear it from someone else who works in that field in another school district. So some of the projects we had over the summer, our elementary school hallways were painted. And I do want to recognize Ray Renzo and his crew, who did a vast majority of this work in-house, saving the district a tremendous amount of money. I still say they're purple. Other people say they're another color, but they're very much bright and they're not institutionally yellow like they were before. So the building looks clean, it looks bright, it looks so much better than it did, and it really makes a big difference in our elementary school. Our middle school, again, the vision of Dave Spittle, supported by our own custodial staff, as well as a contractor. We created a new middle school student support suite, which is up and running. This is in the old technology suite. The previous student support suite has already been revamped into a classroom that was ready to go by the middle of August. Again, compliments to our staff who did a vast majority of that demo and getting that classroom ready for students again. We have other updated classroom spaces. Technology moved into the maker space, as well as some other classrooms. So moving around, the bathrooms, I don't have it on here, but many of the bathrooms in the elementary school were updated for the first time since the '30s or '60s. Floors replaced, painted, new appliances put in. And for anyone who's been over by the sports fields, you'll see we are currently rebuilding the old garage and that'll be used as a new building's ground space. The superintendent took away their big green tent, so now I need to find a new home for them. And that old garage that was there was not very usable. So now they have a new usable space to service our equipment, store some stuff, and be right here on this campus where a vast majority of their work takes place. Transportation, as everyone is aware, we have welcomed a new transportation provider, Royal Coach Lines. There's certainly been some bumps in the road, as there is each year, but I can say it actually has exceeded my expectations and I think we've had a very smooth, smart, smooth start to the school year. We actually had a conference call with them, Zoom with them today, going over the new bus location app. This is something they're developing in-house. It looks very promising. We're actually getting ready to begin a pilot program of it, and we hope to be able to roll this out to our parents sometime this fall. It comes with a whole suite of other tools, electronic referrals, so no more bus drivers writing paper referrals, electronic tools for retrieving videos for our administrators. We don't have to request the video, have it delivered to our office. It's now all going to be done electronically. So lots of promising stuff coming from this company. I actually learned today that from a safety standpoint, they have the most advanced safety system I've ever heard of on a bus. They have multiple cameras that monitor the bus driver and the road at all times. If the driver violates any of their safety protocols, so the safety protocols could be anything from driving over a speed limit, crossing the W L line, rolling through a stop sign. Not only is the driver alerted in real time, right, the system beeps, notifies the driver that you're doing something that is not, the AI-generated safety system that's in there is telling you, doing something like your car would if it tries to steer itself back onto the road. So it does all of those things and it also notifies the terminal manager in their office in real time, right? Bus one is going more than five miles an hour over the speed limit. Bus two has crossed the W L line, whatever it tells them, three times in the last minute, which can be a challenge in Putnam Valley because it's hard to keep your car without crossing the W L line. To the point where I had a conversation with a driver today, they get alerted if they take their hand off the steering wheel because their safety protocols, all our school bus drivers must have two hands on the steering wheel at all times. So if the driver takes his hand off the steering wheel for greater than X number of seconds, they get dinged for not having two hands on the steering wheel. We actually had to make changes to the app. For those who are aware, at the elementary school, at the end of the school day, we have our sheriff, our SRO, stop traffic on Peaceville, sorry, on Oscar and Lake Road, so that our buses could all leave the campus. And our drivers were losing safety points for running the stop sign at the bottom of the driveway. So they were getting all these alerts that they ran a stop sign because the camera doesn't know that there's a sheriff standing, stopping traffic, and waving them through a stop sign. So it's very interesting, the very tech-savvy and modern fleet, and we're looking forward to continuing to work with them. As we hoped, many of our existing Putnam Valley drivers have returned. So while they worked for the previous contractor, they decided to continue working for the new contractor. These are friendly faces that we know. They know our town, they know our roads, and they know our kits. So that was what we wanted. New drivers, they've been very responsive in terms of practice runs, getting drivers familiar with the expectations and with the routes that they're running. So they've really been doing a good job. I know we were expecting a couple more drivers. We still have some more staffing that we're working our way through. They do have a new dedicated space. The previous office, or the previous company used like our break room table. This new contractor set up a trailer right outside of our transportation garage, so they have their own dedicated space where they can meet with their drivers, do all their work, and return our break room to the drivers who want to utilize it. So far, so good, and we're looking forward to continuing to work closely with Royal Coach. As those are aware, look how cute she is. Sorry. So those are aware, our buildings are far from quiet over the summer. We have many programs that are taking place in our buildings, everything from kinder camp to our summer boost programs to regents prep here at the high school. For those who don't know, that's Crystal's daughter, working hard in kinder camp. We hosted the Regional Leadership Institute with, I think there was, it was sold out, hundreds of administrators from around the region here in the high school, visiting and checking out everything we have. We had a coding club that was run by students supervised by Mr. Fiore. And obviously, teachers are in here throughout the summer completing curriculum work. And our extended school year program is essential for those students and requires a great deal of commitment by our teachers, clinicians, support staff, and teaching assistants. All while the custodians are making these buildings spotless. So a quick look at what's next. We've mentioned a couple of times, we have a proposed facilities project. It's been discussed with the board. The facilities planning committee is scheduled to meet with our architects to begin looking at renderings next week. After those are reviewed with the facilities planning committee, they'll be periodically reviewed back with the board. We're going to talk about our communication strategy, how we're going to get this information out to the community to ensure that everyone has the information they need to make an informed decision, ultimately seeking a vote sometime this winter. DBT, which is dialectical behavior training, therapy, therapy, was something that we bought in this school year for all teachers. We rotated each building through the presenter in the pack here during our conference days. I have to say, she was extremely well-received by all buildings, and that's really the start of work that will continue throughout the school year. So I know everyone's eager to see that continue. Our middle years program at the middle school is, will be seeking authorization later this year, early in sometime in this spring. So we're eager to see the outcome of that. We have therapy dogs, or expect therapy dogs, one at the middle school, thanks to our new guidance counselor, and elementary school, thanks to a grant by the PV Education Foundation to fund that. So I know that's something that Jack keeps working closely with our administrators to get those programs up and running. Our high school will be having their diploma program evaluation, so a five-year evaluation cycle is up. It's hard to believe that's been in place for five years already. But we have a visitation team coming next week. I might go pick them up in the little minivan buses. Is that against the plan? I had to check with Michael to make sure I was allowed to drive the little minivan buses. He said I could drive it as long as there's no kids in it, so. We are expecting turf track and fencing replacements to begin later this spring around Memorial Day. That's a project we were able to fund with district funds, so no borrowing, no interest payments, and no need to ask for the community for additional funds. And opportunities. So our goal for the upcoming year is opportunities, and we continue to seek new opportunities for our students, our staff, and our parents. That's it. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, the therapy dogs, are they there daily or what are they utilizing?
Murphy Mondays.
What's that?
My son is really excited for Murphy Mondays at the middle school. The dog, his name is Murphy. He comes on Mondays.
Mondays. And the elementary school?
I'm going to turn it over to my dog expert.
Yeah.
Dog expert in training, but I'm currently learning a lot about. But yes, it would be our dog. It would be Putnam Valley's. Dogs would be here daily as long as we are accepted through our application and identify handlers. There are many steps to take, but we are so fortunate that the Putnam Valley Education Foundation was willing to support this effort and help us start this journey. So that is the hope.
There is nothing better in the world for a child than a loving, you know, dog. And boy, I think that's so outstanding. German Shepherd or?
Most likely a Labrador Retriever. Those are typically the dogs that these organizations breed and prepare for this kind of work.
And that one will live at the elementary school or will go to all?
Well, it can visit throughout the district, so that's one of the benefits of having our own, that it can visit different programs. If there were something to happen in the high school that we needed to bring a dog through, it could go to the high school, it could go to the elementary school for a reading day. It could really visit anywhere, but the idea is it would mostly live in the elementary school and be part of the day-to-day life for those students.
I would love to have my dog Billabong, but he would go nuts in the building. He could be running around.
My dog too.
You couldn't control him, so.
The nice part about this is the
I think it's great.
The dog is trained and certified by an organization. We send handlers to get trained on how to work with this already-trained dog in these type of settings. And then when the training's over, the handlers come back to the district with the dog, I think.
I can add that most of these dogs, they're known as facility dogs, and they come with 40 specific commands and situations they're trained for. So whether it's de-escalating someone who's been escalated or just sitting and listening patiently while a child reads to them, and they have multiple commands that they are trained in, and then the handler becomes familiar with those trainings and the different services the dog can provide.
Excellent, excellent.
And Murphy on Monday, so.
So our new counselor in the middle school,
Don't handle all the law-related questions.
Our new counselor in the middle school has her own pre-trained certified dog that she used in her previous district. And she had a tradition of Murphy Mondays where she would bring the dog to school. So of course, knowing we were on this path already, we have that happening at our middle school now. So our counselor there will bring her dog in and that dog is trained and certified. But unlike the dog that we would be adopting as a community, this dog has a handler that it does go home with already that we don't need to pre-identify and train, so.
Great.
That is just awesome. Thank you so much.
It's something that we really talked about for years, but the economics of it, the initial cost of it, has been a stumbling block. And it was really this year, thanks to the commitment of the Education Foundation to provide that initial funding for us to get the dog and to get the training done. Really, this is feasible for the first time after talking about it for many years.
It's great.
Amazing.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Have a great year.
Okay, we're, next on the agenda is the second reading of the policy series 6000, which is finance, correct?
Yes.
So any additional thoughts?
No, Grace did a terrific job reviewing and assisting us in, you know, doing the amendments and stuff like that. It's good to go.
Okay, then we're going to move to new business. We don't have to read it, right?
No, no.
Eighteen pages?
Eighteen.
It's on the website if people need it. Okay.
It's the old days.
So new business, number one, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Alana Hamel from her position as a school monitor effective August 23rd, 2024, as per document 61/25, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting, and appoint her to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing on September 1st, 2024, and terminating on August 31st, 2028, in the teaching assistant tenure area on step one of the CSCE salary schedule and in accordance with the PVCSD policy 9250. Ms. Hamel holds teaching assistant level one certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Matthew Sorico to a probationary appointment as school district treasurer effective September 16th, 2024, with a probationary period of 52 weeks, September 15th, 2025, at the district business office, and authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into a salary letter of agreement with Mr. Sorico.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Jenna Gargano to a seven-week long-term substitute position as a general education teacher at the middle school, effective August 28th, 2024, through October 21st, 2024, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education, at the substitute salary rate of 150 per day and three hours of transition time with grade-level teachers prior to restart date of August 28th, 2024. Ms. Gargano holds students with disabilities 1 through 6 and childhood education 1 through 6 initial certifications.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number five, please.
Number four.
Number four.
Sorry.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of school monitor Jennifer Cognow from the district, effective August 27th, 2024, as per document number 62-25, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Stephanie Chin to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant, commencing September 1, 2024, and terminating on August 31st, 2028, in the teaching assistant tenure area on step four of the CSEA salary schedule, and in accordance with PVCSD policy 9250, Ms. Chin holds teaching assistant level three certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number six, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Esme Vega Delgado to a probationary appointment as a bus monitor, effective September 3rd, 2024, with a probationary period of fifty-two weeks, September 2nd, 2025, at the transportation department on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number seven, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Mary Jane DeGiorgio to a probationary appointment as a bus monitor, effective September 3rd, 2024, with a probationary period of fifty-two weeks, September 2nd, 2025, at the transportation department on step five of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number eight, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Taylor Simpson to a one-month long-term substitute position as a teacher at the middle school, effective August 29th, 2024, through September 30th, 2024, or sooner, at the discretion of the Board of Education, at the substitute salary rate of $150 per day. Ms. Simpson holds childhood education one through six and early childhood B through two initial certifications.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number nine, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to amend the previously-approved appointment of Olivia Gezzo at the business meeting of August 22nd, 2024, as a long-term substitute as follows. Appoint Olivia Gezzo to a one-year leave replacement position as a general education teacher at the middle school, effective September 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025, or sooner, at the discretion of the Board of Education, on step one, masters of the PBFT salary schedule. Ms. Gezzo holds students with disability one through six and childhood ed one through six initial certifications.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number 10, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Maria Goldrick to a probationary appointment as a bus driver, full-time, effective September 1st, 2024, with a probationary appointment of twenty-six weeks, March 3rd, 2025, at the transportation department, on step 11 of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number 11, please.
Resolved to retire the series 6000 policies currently in effect for the district and approve the second reading of policy series 6000, as per doc number 60-25/25, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? So, as of tonight, if we approve this, it will show up on the district website under the policy?
It's taking a little time, but yes.
Okay, all right. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number 12, please.
Whereas the negotiators for the district and the Putnam Valley Administrators Association signed a memorandum of agreement dated September 5th, 2024, for the terms of a four-year agreement, effective July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2028, as presented to the Board at this meeting, document number 64-25. Whereas, by law, the Board of Education is required to vote to approve these monies necessary to fund the provisions of said agreement. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board hereby ratifies the terms of the four-year collective bargaining agreement between the PVAA and the district.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Okay, I'd like to open it up for public comment on any topic? Okay, upcoming meetings?
So our next meeting is scheduled for September 26th, and we'll have two presentations lined up for that meeting, our external auditor's presentation, as well as our elementary school kicking off our opening of schools reports. Following that meeting, October 17th will be our middle school opening of schools report, as well as athletics. October 29th, high school opening of schools report, and then November 14th, Buildings and Grounds and Technology, opening of schools updates. And shortly after that, we will be jumping into budget season. I know that we're going to squeeze in some additional ones. I know that the writing committee wants to do a presentation, as well as our MTSS committee, so we're going to have to find time to squeeze those in as well.
Okay, do we have a date for the facilities meeting next week?
Thursday, 6:00 PM. I think the invite went out tonight.
Okay. Thursday, my schedule looks terrible. Okay. All right. Board member comments?
Yeah, we received the resolutions of, you know, the association, School Boards Association. I gotta say that this is the first year I really don't disagree with any of the opinions of the board, and especially, there's, there's a few that I think the associations should be applauded for moving them forward. Number four was improving tier six and tier five of the teacher retirement. Number 10, the hybrid bus support, they're saying the electric buses are going to be failures, get rid of them, go with the hybrid bus support.
Tell us how you really feel.
That's resolution number 10. 14 was a direct funding for teacher students, for tech students, which I think is great because we know that the tech education that many of our kids receive is, is much more expensive in the long run, and they, they should provide direct funding for that. Number 16, the opt-out of transportation, bus transportation for parents, I think that's a wise move. Many parents want to drive their kids to school. If they wish to do that, they should be able to opt-out and have us then reconfigure our pickups and drop-offs, added cost savings for everybody in the district. Number 21, increased universal pre-K funding. This, Dr. Luft, you've talked about this often. We're limited at 5,400, which is a ridiculous amount, and the association is looking to raise that quite a bit substantially, so I support that, so we can get that pre-K program started. Because we can't do it at 5,400. It's ludicrous. Number 22, I especially like this one, oppose the Title IX revisions, with some amendments to the original regulations that would alter Title IX. In other words, making it safer for female athletes to participate in sports without any fear of danger or anything like that, from individuals who are of the opposite sex performing in those sports. Number 23, oppose adding more school closure days. I was tentative about that, but I think it's a good idea, because our calendar consistently shrinks each year with more and more dates that we have to consider by New York State for closure. And then 26, and the association opposes this resolution, and I agree with them. And they are saying, don't do away with Regents exams, they have their place in our schools. And I agree with that. You know, for the, the child who may not be college-bound, or, or may not want, want to invest totally in an IB program, the Regents are a good, a good goalpost to go for, for each student. And I think they encapsulate the course very, very well. They've been around forever, and I think they do their job. But all of those that I just men, men, mentioned, excuse me, 410, 14, 16, 21, 22, 23, and 26, I strongly support those, and the others, I support as well. First year, I haven't had a disagreement with.
Actually, the, the West Putts Advocacy Committee is meeting this Monday, the 16th, from 7:00 to 8:30 on Zoom. You can sign, log in, sign up, listen to the discussion, we'll go through all of those. West Putt will decide where they stand. I will bring them to the, this table.
Yes.
We will decide whether we agree or disagree with West Putt, or, or NISBA, and where we stand, so that's, that's
I think that's good.
Help.
But I just wanted to highlight these, because I thought they were exceptional, and very timely.
Okay.
Oh, also, just real fast for the public, if you've not seen the Bubble Bus.
I knew it was coming.
Barbara and I were there. On Bubble Bus Day. I, I know, really, for any parent who's never experienced that.
It's true.
If you have a young child who's been invited to that
Or an old child.
Or an old child, right? I was mesmerized by that thing.
They will be impressed also.
I could not, we're standing there.
Aiden, have you ever seen the Bubble Bus?
Never seen it around.
Okay.
Under the shower of bubbles, Barbara and I are there, it's like being in another universe. It was just
Sam went to birthday.
Thank you, PTA, for that, by the way. Thank you.
Okay, I sent everybody a, a new link to the, the LHEC survey. Dr. Luft filled it out.
We will do it.
So, when they said only twenty, whatever they said, twenty-four, whatever, out of ninety-six people, or 160 people. Anyway, it was a little crazy, so. And then only two people from Putnam Valley. I didn't want to ask them who the second person was. But anyway, it don't, it does take a while, but it does, it's not that long, and, and really, that survey, we use a lot of that information for advocacy. I also wanted to mention that the governor has passed a resolution that all school boards have to have a student member is going to be required as of January of 2025. I'm proud of the fact that we
For year.
Wanted student voice and did that before it was a regulation.
Welcome.
We, we certainly are glad for the input of our students, and, and when we hear them give their opinions or ideas, it is really helpful to us, so I'm glad that the rest of the state is going to get on board. I just wanted to reinforce the fact that Westchester Putnam School Boards Association, Lower Hudson Education Council, and the Council of School Superintendents, all are advocating for our students and for our communities. They, through their advocacy efforts, the, the mixed athletics was tabled, punted, whatever, pushed back.
Outstanding.
For more research, but that's because we belong to, to organizations that fight for student and parent rights. And, and I think that we should be really proud of the fact that, that we belong to organizations, that organizations that stand up for students. And it's more than just Putnam Valley. It's all of Westchester, Putnam, Rockland, Orange, you know, it gets larger. I don't know what the school superintendents, how, how big that group is, but.
It's like up to 90 in, just for the region.
Yeah. So.
Good.
So, I think that's really helpful.
I, I just wanted to add two things. First of all, the, our first PTA meeting of the year was the other night, and it was very well-attended, so I wanted to give kudos to our PTA board for getting the word out there, because we had to like add more chairs at the last minute, because there were so
Circle kept getting bigger.
The circle kept getting bigger, which was wonderful to see. It was a great conversation about all things PTA, so if you are not a member of the PTA, please join to support those efforts and volunteer whatever, whatever hours you can, whether it's one hour or more than that. And then, just lastly, I'd like to wholeheartedly give the entire district a thank you. Having three children in all three buildings in this district right now is a wonderful adventure, and all of my children have had a phenomenal experience in their first few days of school in new buildings, and I think that that's really important to say, because it's nerve-wracking for a student, for a parent, to go into a new building for the first time to make that transition, and all of my children have had a great experience. So I just want to thank everybody who's been involved in the process of welcoming our students back to school. I get the privilege of having the conversations with them at home, the real-deal conversations, and they're always positive. And so, thank you again to everybody for just making our environment so welcoming and so friendly. The Big Buddy system at the high school is an amazing thing, and I can't tell you how it just really made that transition for my daughter moving into that freshman class so easy, so thank you for all of the work that you're doing.
I did want to say, you reminded me, so Sam and I were at the elementary school for their back-to-school nights, and Dr. Luft is right, they, they were really well-attended. And it's very hard when parents are like, where's room 7A? And I'm like, I don't know. Help! But anyway, they were really interested in meeting all of their, the teachers, the specialists, whatever, the parents were excited, it was good. I did talk to Dr. Podesta, she's really enthused about the writing, and I said, I want samples, I want samples, I want to see what the, I want to see what they're writing. Because you can talk about it, but it, it's different when you see those little letters formed on paper with little pictures with them. Anyway, so hopefully that will come. I know that Sasha said she was going Tuesday to the middle school. You were also going Tuesday to the middle school, right?
I am going Tuesday, and then I will be at the high school, the 25th, I believe it is, yes.
And so Wednesday, at the middle school, is 7 and 8, grade 7 and 8. Is anybody else going?
I will not be there for that one.
You're going?
Yes.
I'll probably then go too.
I'll be there. Yep.
Okay, and then the high school, Sam will go, I'll probably go.
Yeah.
And I also go to one of the high school ones.
Yeah, to me it's
I'll be at the high school too.
It's hearing, you know, that, the goal that the administration is setting for the year, I think that's important to hear.
I like to hear what the administrators have to say to the parents. That, that always, I think is very important, the message that they give.
I agree. Anything else? You had a good start?
I had a, my son had a great start. We're really happy. Travis did a, Mr. McCarty did a orientation the morning of middle school, which I think was really hectic, the first day of school, which I think was really, it seemed a little bit hectic for people, but it was incredible. It really eased a lot of my worries, I got the same feedback from everybody else, and it was just like so warming to have it. I feel like, I was asking a lot of questions beforehand, can they have snack? Like, you know? But he really, he eased all those worries.
How do they know where the classrooms are?
Yeah, yeah. And it was really great, and my son has been just so enthused. I was going to talk about Murphy Mondays anyway, but I already talked about it, so he's really excited about that. I'm really excited that we have a second counselor, and that they're doing mental health things already in the schools.
Yep.
Red Ribbon Week comes upon us pretty quickly also, which is like an anti-bullying week, which I think also goes hand-in-hand with mental health. And I think that's next month, I think. So I'm really happy that all these things are happening in the schools, because as a nurse, mental health is so important, and it's just something that I strongly advocate for, so I love to hear it.
So I have a quick question about the fifth-grade orientation, because this has come up from a couple people. You gave yourself away.
Who may or may not be in the room.
So, we, I, Mr. McCarty and I had a quick conversation regarding the conflict of putting your elementary school age student on the bus, and also being at the fifth-grade orientation, and for any families who have any elementary school age children in that, it creates a conflict. We could easily move the orientation time back and shift our day, that's not an issue at all. The question is, what is your belief regarding parent feedback on that? Is, is shifting it back a couple hours going to make it easier for parents, or is it shifting it back a couple hours going to make it more difficult for parents?
I think parents who have to get to work, that's definitely going to be
It would be difficult.
I think parents who have to get to work, that's definitely going to be a thing. I think the, you know, sometimes you just live things in the moment, and you think, wow, like, we should probably talk about this. And one of the things that I lived was not being able to be in two places at the same time when my elementary student was getting on the bus and I wanted to also be at the middle school. I was fortunate to have, you know, another person that could go to the middle school orientation in my stead. But for some parents, that might not be feasible. And so, we don't want parents to miss anything. What I think that we could do, I think it would be, you know, helpful if we did some sort of, you know, I don't know, Facebook post about that or something like that, to just get input from families. Because I don't want to speak for families that may have different situations. But it was certainly like, I have to choose between which kid, right? You know, I'm going to be there for right now. And, you know, I don't think that any of our families should be in that predicament. And I think that we just need to get a little bit more cognizant about what's happening at the elementary school versus what's happening at the middle school versus what's happening at the high school, the board, like, all of those pieces. Because now, I think the conflicts are often, and we just need to be more cognizant of that. So, it would be good if we could get some feedback from families in some sort of way. I don't know what the best way to do that would be.
I have a little, I have a little bit of extra feedback. I think it would be beneficial, I'm part of a group on Facebook called the Class of, Yes. Parents of the Class of 2032, which is my son's grade. And I think pretty much like every grade has them. There was a lot of, like me, a few days before, saying, are they going to have snack? Oh, my gosh, they can't have metal water bottles. What are we going to do?
Right, like before.
I don't understand. Are they having six-week electives? Or do we need to get, how many pencil sharpeners do we need? There were a lot of questions leading up to the orientation. I think instead of, and this is just what I was thinking, you know, in days going into the middle school, like, before going to middle school, I was like, I have so many questions. I wish that maybe we could have done like a kindergarten bus run for the middle schoolers. Like, could we do a middle school orientation before the first day of school?
I agree.
Then I got to thinking of the logistics of it, and can you have parent, like, can you have people come in based on, you know, the unions, all of that? Like, can you have people come in in the summer? But.
The morning of, I don't think they met with teachers, right?
They didn't, no.
So, yeah, that's probably an easier fix. My first understanding of it was that it was going to take the place of back-to-school night, which it's not.
Right.
Which I think was made clear probably like closer to the day. But I do agree with you, especially for a parent that has never had a student go through the middle school. I think that was part of my relief, is that I, like, I had my daughter fill out where the rooms are for my son so that he wouldn't be lost, right? But for people that don't have another student that's already gone through, it's challenging to figure out all of the answers to the questions. So, maybe prior to would be an option. Because one thing that they do is they bring the kids here in the spring, which I think is wonderful for the kids to get a tour of the building and all of that. That happened, which was great.
Last year, they did.
Right, yes.
In the old days, when I was AP at the middle school, we would run an orientation for the incoming, at that time it was sixth grade, and then later on the fifth grade. But just those students, a week before school began, put them in the gym over at the middle school and have the parents there, the kids there, and do a talk to those students who had never experienced the middle school. The kids who had already been there, they were fine. We knew they would be okay on opening day. But the brand-new ones, we'd met with them. And any new student who had rolled into the district, first time attending, we invited them all in, gave them briefings, had some teachers who volunteered. Now, I don't know the possibility of that, but who, at that time, volunteered, three or four, who helped. And we also got eighth-grade students.
That's great.
To also assist and show where the classes are and walk around with the groups. But we did that a week before, so it didn't impact any of the school days. And the kids were all set prior to that.
We did the locker openings, too.
Yeah, locker openings.
Oh, the lockers. But we don't have lockers in fifth grade, right? The lockers are always.
That's why we bring in fifth and sixth by themselves that first day. So, that whole first day is just five, six.
Which is wonderful, too.
And they do all those things you said. They have the student orientation, they have parent orientation, they have locker openings, tour of the buildings, all of that stuff happens in that first superintendent's conference day. It obviously complicates things when we're trying to get people in before the start of the school year.
I know that, and that's tough. We relied on the older kids, and then, you know, ask them.
I would also say that at the PTA meeting, a parent brought up the fact that she had a first and second grader, and how could she, on back-to-school night, how could she attend both? And, you know, so they talked about like doing each grade on a separate night, but one of the parents said, I have triplet boys in fourth grade. Even if you put just the fourth grade on one night, I still have to pick. Like, it's, I do agree, and I think Dr. Luft's worked hard to try to make sure that the buildings don't overlap, that things are not on the same night, so that parents have to choose. But sometimes you just have to choose. Sometimes you have to figure something out.
I think a Zoom meeting is a nice compromise, maybe, just, you know, something to ease the.
Or like a coffee with the principal, come with your questions, right? Like, or maybe there's FAQ night, right? Like, just frequently asked questions that we know you're probably thinking. Let's just ease everybody's anxiety before the transition to middle school, which is probably the bigger one for most parents. And then open forum to just ask any other questions that may not have been addressed, I think will kind of calm everybody down. To be honest with you, I will fully admit, my son was totally fine. I was the one that was worried about him, making sure that he was going to have a good first day, you know, not be like lost in the hallway.
They said, show up with their schedule. And it's like, show, and send them to room 201. It's like, what?
So. But I will say, the amount of planning and thought that I personally believe has gone into each transition for each building is absolutely incredible. I think now we're just trying to take it from great to absolutely amazing. Especially having just the ninth grade in that first day, I think was tremendous. Because now for kids, that's really the moment of anxiety, right? And it was kind of really brought down by them being the only ones in the building.
And the reality is, it's ninth grade and probably 90% of the seniors who signed up to be, I mean, the number of students who volunteer to be big buddies is overwhelming, so.
It's just amazing, yes.
The room was packed with just the freshmen and the big buddies coming in, so it's a great sight to see.
Yeah.
That speaks volumes to the commitment of our kids, you know, in caring about each other. I think that's great.
Something the elementary school could consider, perhaps, just so that you're not adding more nights to the calendar, is a staggered back-to-school night. So, maybe first grade's at one time, and then second grade is at another time, like a 5:30 to 7:00, and then maybe like a 6:30 to 8:00 or something, you know, I don't know. But this way, it's not a second night, same amount of hours for teachers, you know.
I think what I'll do is I'll ask the buildings to bring those back to their building steering committees. That seems like good work, they could come out of there and decide how to best move forward. I do want to point out, the calendar thing came up last year. We've actually committed significant time over the summer to meet with administrators, as well as our office staff, begin to develop, and Grace has really been instrumental in this, begin to develop a district-wide events calendar, which has really always existed, just sort of identifying those events that are typically scheduled during the year, to schedule them upfront. Or to know that if you are scheduling something during the year, it really needs approval, administrative approval for what are you conflicting with on that sort of master calendar as it exists now. So, this will definitely be a year in the works as we try to get it all done. But our goal is if we capture everything effectively this year, next year, we just roll it over and we know where to start. So, there's been several meetings, and everyone's on board. So, I know I've said this probably every year since I became superintendent, there should be less conflicts that always seem to find their way in. But I'm going to say again that I think this year, there should be less conflicts of events, evening events between buildings.
No chorus concerts on the night of the board meetings. That's a big one.
Well, what did somebody say at the PK meeting, that the graduation is the same night as the eighth-grade trip is coming back or something? I don't know. Oh, that was this year?
That was, yeah.
There was really no, there was hours between the two.
Oh, okay.
We worked it out, we figured it out.
Totally fine.
Okay.
It's all good.
Anything else? Jeanette, anything? No?
It seems to have been a great start, and thank you to the administration, the teachers, the staff, everyone involved.